Okay, I'll go ahead and. I don't like using that. I'll go ahead and open the meeting of the Pershing County Board of Commissioners. It's our regular meeting Wednesday, February 2nd, 2022. The first item is Pledge of Allegiance. If you would join us, please.
My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. The next item is approval of minutes. We don't have any this time. So then I'll go on to public input, public comments and discussion. No action may be taken on a matter raised under this item of the agenda until the matter itself has been specifically included on an agenda as an item upon which action will be taken. Public commentary will generally be limited to three minutes per person. Is there any public comment in the audience? Seeing none, is there any on Zoom?
Good morning, everybody.
Good morning, Shayla. So just a none. Okay, so no public comment. Shayla Hudson's participating via Zoom and then she has a conference, a watered conference that she's attending. So she's doing dual purpose here. So as Vice Chair, I'm just kind of facilitating the meeting. The next item is review of all agenda items to determine if any do or do not impose a direct and significant economic burden on a business or directly restrict the formation, operation, or expansion of a business. Did you see any?
I do not see anything.
Okay. Shayla, did you see anything?
No, I didn't. I'll make a motion.
Yes, I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
A motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Unclassified Departments, Road Department, Mr. Hill.
Good morning.
Good morning. How are you?
Pretty good.
Great. Wonderful.
As usually you've been busy. Me and I with the Grass Valley, got a cattle bar from the BLM for Grass Valley Road. We had one. Track club, so that's a good thing. Plowing, plow spaulding. We have a guy up there that we usually get him out. Took us a while this year, but we got him plowed out. That was a minor disaster, but we got it done fine. So that was good. Out east here, we got Gailen out there. He finished the important road to the Limbo Ranch. So that's all done for now. Of course, we'll probably have to go over to give, but it hasn't been plated in a couple of years. So that's really good thing. Out east, Kevin and Bill finished Dixie Valley, did part of Pleasant Valley. Now it's dry. So we're headed for higher ground over in Jersey Valley. All important roads. We're getting those done. Jerry Monroe, he finished Callahan to Jungle, basically. So that's a good thing. That's a very important road. And had to move them back over to Grass Valley. We were, we got some complaints and they're right. The roads, all the roads in the subdivision up there, they're all bad because of the snow.
Yeah.
So Jerry did Herschel for me. And then now he teamed up with Robert and of course, we're having all water now. It went from wet to dry. So that's. And anyways, we got those all done. Basically, the whole area, almost all those roads are plated.
I have good comments that Monday night's meeting in Grass Valley, that you were out there doing a lot of work.
Yeah, I took one complaint.
Yeah. Oh, yes.
We just put a covert on the far end of Herschel where we had some the snow. It drifts in the hole with, you know, we don't really need a pipe there, but it wasn't enough to keep it drifting. So we're working on that. And now we're cleaning, we're cleaning weeds. Weeds got out of hand up there, especially inside that subdivision. So we're just going to go ahead, you know, on the road. For the effects of our work, we're going to take care of those, haul them and burn them. And then grass about to go there's we're working on that. Get them cleaned up. Then I'm going to put more pre-emerging up there. Hopefully not have to spray.
Knock it out.
Yeah. Everything I've been doing, but.
Okay. So we have a salary resolution for Jacob Richard moving him.
Actually, I forgot to report. He got a CDL. I've told him if he could do that for me, I'd give him Ray. So that's what I'm doing.
So we're moving him from 27.6 to 27.7. And it's been signed by HR and everything. If I could get a motion.
And I would make that motion to approve that salary resolution.
All second.
You have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, Landfill.
So Robert cleaned up Grass Valley Transfer Site. And then we helped them, they worked with cost disposal for, there was a lot of white goods up there. We had to rearrange them. Reload them and hopefully they'll get them hauled. There's that. And then I looked into us hauling our own, doing our own.
Yeah.
Transfer sites.
Transfer sites. It looks, you know, I don't, I don't know if it'd be feasible. We're looking at, and we don't even know what the budget's going to be. We're still negotiating with us for the haulage, but I budgeted oh, pretty much for the, a big, a much bigger number, 50% more, which brings it to about 50, 150,000. And we would, we would spend about 125,000 here just on wages, fuel for the truck and then other expenses related to having a truck. And addition to that, it's going to cost about 350,000 to get into business. So I don't know if that leaves 100, or excuse me, leaves like 26,000 left to service $350,000 worth of debt. I don't know if that's feasible. I think that's as far as I go. So.
Okay. Well, thank you.
Yeah.
And then if you could share that with Rain too, for budget time, so we at least have it.
Yep. I discussed it with her, but yeah, we didn't go into detail.
Yeah.
I'll give her those numbers and stuff. And then, like I said, that's where it ended up. So it was that debt was 26,000.
Yeah.
Okay, but thank you for doing that. Is there anything else on that, Joe?
Yeah, two, we have two applications up there. I was hoping to get some more, wait, kind of waiting a little bit, but doesn't look like a goal to, so we're probably going to interview talk to Mr. Heckley at Karen, but probably next week, I hope. Somebody hired for students.
Okay. All right, great. Any questions of Mr. Hill?
Nope. Good job.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Have a great day.
You bet.
All right. So we have Senior Center and Volunteer Coordinator.
I have nothing to report.
Okay. I'm wondering if we could get a report from her like we used to.
She's working on a report that she has to do for somebody else anyway, so we can, that'll carry over.
Okay, that would be awesome. Buildings and grounds, Mr. Hanica, how are you? Good. So tell us about what you guys are doing.
Well, we've been spending a lot of time putting desks together for various offices this last weekend. So.
Where's, where are we at with the fuelers, Spencer?
You know, I've talked to BNT about it several times.
Yeah.
Don't know. The supplier has it. It's supposed to have shipped. Don't know what's going on. Cause I've been having to, I have a weight measures. Needs to come out and do a test. And they would rather do it on the new dispenser than on the old one. And I saw that's a test, my new test, my new test. We have to come back later time. Yeah, it's just.
Did we, and we, we had the one proposal, but two different dispensers. We didn't have two different proposals.
Right.
If they can't fulfill, maybe it's time to go.
I get to that point myself.
Yeah.
Then our startups, we took some, had another restroom taken out to the ball fields or higher floats coming up. And then you've soft or soft tee ball, softball's going to start up too. So. Started working on that stuff as well.
Okay. Anything else?
No, not really. It just doesn't seem like a lot, but it's, it's lots of these desks are thousands of pieces.
Wow. Okay. So we have an item on our agenda regarding the street fever car club.
Forget it.
If you would like to come up, please.
It's car show season.
Yeah. So our request is to use the courthouse park and bathrooms for the annual show and shine event that will be held June 3rd to 6th.
It's actually, so it's the third through the fifth.
The fifth.
So we start typically after courthouse hours are closed, five o'clock for vendor setup on Friday. And then Saturday, AM and Sunday, telling me. But we take till five o'clock so that, you know, just everybody's out of the park. It's all cleaned up. You know, ready to go for Monday. So we ask for the full weekend.
Well, you guys do an awesome job and I know you work well with, with John.
Just kidding. Yes, yes. We don't ever have any troubles. I mean, you know.
Mark the sprinklers.
Yeah, spray, spray around the sprinklers. We put the stakes up. We carry the insurance policy, which they won't write that vision until April for us. So. But I brought last year's, you should have a copy of it anyway, but it'll be the same company, K and K Insurance.
Okay.
So once it's done, they send the binder to you guys. So.
Okay, that's awesome. I don't think so. Shayla, do you have any questions?
I don't have any. I'll make the motion to approve the use of the park for the car show.
A second, that motion.
So I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. So that's awesome. Have a wonderful time. I know you will.
Yes.
We all look forward to it.
Great event. So you and I will talk.
As we do.
As we do. All right, guys. Thank you so much.
Thank you. So nothing else. Thank you. All right. Have a great day. Okay. So library, is there anything from the library? And nobody on Zoom? Nope. Okay. Pershing County Fire and Ambulance. Okay, great. So.
Hi, Marty.
Hi Marty, do you want to go first?
Sure. I can't hear Rod. We just.
I'm on too.
Okay. I'll give mine on ambulance and then Rod can go. Just a total for January, 32 calls, two transfers, one derby. We've been pretty busy. And then I did give you the report for July to November.
Right. And thank you very much for that. And I, we shared with all the other commissioners as well. So I appreciate that. So when you have Jan, you have January's numbers, when you can update it and keep it going for us, that'd be great.
Sounds good. Go ahead, Rod.
Much, Marty.
Okay, so can you hear me now?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay. So first thing I'd like to do is thank the Road Department for their, we had BLM come in. They moved their old building out and brought a new one in. The Road Department went in and hauled some gravel in there and leveled that off so they could get that building set. So BLM is, is back where they were and they have a new building in there. So that's, that's a great thing. We have for firefighter one this Saturday, the, one of the guys from the estate is going to be testing for firefighter one for the written test. And as far as fires, this last month, we had two. I wasn't able to break out how many rescue truck runs we went on with the accidents on the highway and stuff. And I'm going to be back on the 10th, I think it is. So any, any questions for me?
I don't have any questions.
I don't.
Shayla, do you have any questions?
No, I don't have any.
Okay. And Shayla, will you be on till nine o'clock or when will you be going?
I'll be, how long do you need me on here?
Well, no, just let us know when you're not so that I don't keep asking for you.
Okay.
Very much.
Thank you.
Rodney, thank you very much. Mike Heidemann, you're on, correct?
I am, yes.
Do you have a report?
Not really, other than we did get the grant turned in. So, you know, we'll see how that plays out.
Okay, great.
Which was the grant for the SCBA's.
Okay. Thank you very much. Is Sean Burke on?
I do have one other thing, Carol.
Okay, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
So I was contacted by Pool Pact in regards to some ideas to have central CPR training centers in each county, maybe at fire departments. So I worked with Alan Call, Wayne Carlson and Marshall Smith on some suggestions. And it looked like what they're going to develop is a grant program specifically for CPR to be able to supply all of the current mannequins that are required with the recording devices and whatnot to each of the areas that they ensure with the goal of being able to utilize the certified training center in each area to help with the, the counties that need it for certain departments, the schools, things like that. So that's in the works. If you hear about that, that's, that's a kind of on the, on the planning stage right now.
Okay, that's perfect. That's great. Thank you very much for doing that. Is there anything else, Mike? No. I'm sorry. Did you say Sean is or not?
Is not.
Is not. Thank you. Community Center?
No, that's, you're skipping over Ripe Patch.
Oh, I'm sorry. Grass Valley and Ripe Patch.
I do have an email from Stacy Bristow, who's the Fire Chief at Ripe Patch. She says, Ripe Patch was hit hard in January with COVID. Three members tested positive, one, one member, member was in the hospital four days. And four members are out of state and one is out of the country. That left the department with one member able to respond to calls. Unfortunately, our department is unable to respond with only one member. We had a call for a house fire that was flexed to Ripe Patch 10 minutes after Love Lock was already on the way. So why that? I don't know. By the time the department was called, the fire was out and Love Lock had canceled the call. She says, we have two members doing EMS training to remove, to renew their EMT licenses. And all members have had their physicals abated.
Okay, great. Thank you. Could you send a copy of that to Lacy for her records, please? And Emily, Fire Department, do you have anything on that?
I don't.
Okay. I'm sorry, Community Center. And Shayla, do you have any update on the Community Center?
No, I don't have anything. The last conversation I had with Diane, everything was going well. She will be taking a few days off the first part of this month. And I have asked her to make sure that John gets the setups and the calendar and updated every week or so as needed.
Great. Thank you very much. So the next item then is Cooperative Extension. And we have Steve Foster and Colby Burke here to report, which is great. Thank you. Colby, your newsletter is awesome. It is.
And yesterday she did bingo calling and exercising at the senior center. That was great.
That exercising is pretty cool because it gives them range and it's tailored for their age.
I need to come to that.
How many, one day a week?
It's supposed to be two days a week, but we had that little break.
Yeah.
So what days of the week are you doing it?
Um, Tuesdays and Thursdays.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
All right, Mr. Foster.
As you can see, I didn't get fired. Yeah.
We're very grateful for that.
And you didn't quit. Yeah. And I'm getting recovered from my needs. Just some things. This was a kind of a study they did last year. I think Hyde, Richard, well, I know Heidi participated in this. I participated in it. But it's a kind of a community asset survey. And it's got different parts. Kind of the first part tells you how they did it. Kind of that was community leaders, and then they sent out a survey online and some hard copies. But it's got some good information here, especially if you're looking to apply for grants. Talk about values, people, places, things there, demographics of the county, the economic characteristics of the county, industry top performers. And then land use and fiscal characteristics, then also social characteristics. Got some good information here. Most of this was done by this Joseph, the Nicky and Buddy Gordon and then Marlene Rebory helped across state. I forget how many they've done so far, but I wanted to share this came in, kind of in the last year and I wanted to share. And that's the only thing I got is, so Larry at Grass Valley gave a little talk up there Monday night. How the extension does. And then be planning my pesticide training the first of March sometime after I just.
Yeah.
And that's about it for me.
Okay. Well, we're very grateful that you're still with us.
Yes, I am.
And how's it coming with the clerk recruitment?
Oh yeah, well, that was posted just last week, I think.
I think we're in eight days. Yeah.
Yeah. So we'll wait and see if we can get two applicants or maybe two people.
Yeah, I know that too.
I don't.
Really?
Yeah.
Okay, that's awesome.
I'm excited.
Well, I'm sure you are.
Show without one.
Yeah. So Colby, you have a report?
I do. I have the newsletter that you guys have gotten the email too. And then I was going to report basically that we have 130 youth members that are attending clubs already. We started again over in October. 16 clubs still active, 25 leaders. We've had some change in those. I don't know if you've noticed. Basically softball's kind of teams around and arts and crafts no longer has a leader. If you read the newsletter, you see which clubs are pretty much up and going and you've been getting the calendar over so you know what's going on there. What's coming up March, we have a livestock judging. I'm super excited. That's not going to be just for H orient. It's going to open to other counties and it's also going to have a horse group for FFA. So it really is going to branch out. We'll also do a showmanship clinic that time. And then in April, there's going to be a butcher clinic. So those kids that want to learn how to actually process an animal, which I think is really helpful in our day and age. So we'll have that option. Um, I'm missing something. But do you guys have any questions from the newsletter or about?
I didn't have any questions other than you're doing an awesome job. I mean, really. And so getting so many young people involved and with so many different things.
Well, and there are like 15 new ones this year. So even though we had 189 last year, I'm, I'm excited that we are getting touching base with kids that don't normally do it. Cause they do, every club, even baseball softball has lead, has, you know, elected officers. So they're learning the leadership aspect. They're not just coming and playing baseball. Like they're actually doing their project, but doing some record keeping, doing demonstrations. Like every club I'm making sure is doing all of those things so that it's not just the livestock kids have officers. It's every club has that opportunity. So hopefully if they ever sit on one of your boards, they'll have the skills.
Well, I hope they do someday. I really do. That'd be awesome.
And May 1st? May 1st livestock show.
I'm in.
I know. I got that in the mail yesterday.
I'm like, is there something else besides our livestock show?
Shayla, do you have any questions?
No, I don't have anything. I think Colby's doing a great job.
Thank you. Oh, go ahead. I'm sorry. No, Larry, do you have any questions?
I have.
Okay. Well, thank you very, very much. Have a great day, you guys. I noticed that the clambers are here for the museum thing. The museum people are supposed to be here about nine. So I thought I'd.
We're perfectly fine with you.
Okay, good. All right.
I've known that. I've known that about you guys.
And then you gentlemen, are you here for anything in particular? I'm sorry. Ah, okay. All right, great. Thank you. You want to go now? Next item is IT Department.
So last, last couple of weeks have been busy with budget planning. I've been getting a lot of requests from other departments for quotes for equipment for next year. And some of those quotes actually turned into orders for this year. As they finally have money in their budgets for this year. There's also been kind of a complex continuing issue with the state VPN for the Child Support Office that I'm working through with Nevada Enterprise IT Services, just the state's IT Department. Don't really have an ETA on that because it's it's, well, it's one of those issues where you don't know why it's not working because everything looks fine. So we're, we're still trying to track that one down. Still only have one applicant so far for the IT technician position. The application period closes the 18th of this month. So hopefully we get a few more. I have been, I've been in some talks with CISA, the CISA. It's a division of the Department of Homeland Security that's focused on cybersecurity and infrastructure security. Things like that. They, we had done a vulnerability assessment with them last year and they are, they're starting to open up new services that are free for local government. So we're, I'm looking at those things like a phishing, phishing test, phishing tests. So they, they send out one of those phishing emails that we're all so familiar with and. give me a report back on how many people opened it, how many people opened the link in it. Things like that. So we can, we can continue to, to train and make our employees cybersecurity aware.
How many forwarded it to you? Question mark.
They, they don't track that, but I do. Yeah. No, that's, yeah, if you're not sure, ask. And I will tell you. We, I, Brian Mitchell from AT&amp;T, I came out last week and we did site visits to, to figure out how we were going to bring fiber into the buildings and where, where that endpoint in the building was going to be. So we would then connect our stuff to for fiber internet. At the site visits, the, the one that was, seemed to be the most concerning was the courthouse. They were thinking that they might, they might have, might have to trench across the park to put in conduit to run fiber through to get to the courthouse. They have since found conduit under the park already going to the courthouse. So now the, the major concern is the conduit between the courthouse and the admin building that runs under Central. Because we, when John, John actually mentioned that when they tried to run through stuff through them, the passage hit gravel. So if they're, they're going to try and bring a vacuum truck out, AT&amp;T is going to try and bring a vacuum truck out to try and clean that out. They clean it and can pass through. Fine, then we're great. Otherwise, they might have to dig up the street and repair that conduit.
Yeah.
So.
And you know that's a state highway.
A central? I do. I don't know if they do. But I will make sure that Brian is aware. That's, that's all I have for you.
Where are we at with telephones?
Telephones. I need to now, now that we've got some, some things straightened out at the senior center, I need to finish, I need to, I need to bring their cordless phones over the, and then forward, for the senior center number to the new phones. Sheriff is next on my list. There's kind of a lot that I have to do to prep the sheriff's office for that. So after hopefully, starting this week, but definitely after I turned in my budget, I'm basically going to and solving the, the state connection issue of the annex. I'm going to be camping out there so I can get all that stuff sorted out. And then I can deploy phones at sheriff's office.
I thought they were going to do most of it and all rely on you to do.
I did. That's just not possible. Because, because they use the, the basically net business network. I have to be involved because I, they, they connect my network. Make that happen. But I'm, I'm trying, I'm trying to, I'm trying to catch as many birds as I can whenever I'm on each side. So museum, museum's done. We just have to port their number. We actually have to just start doing port. Annex is done. Have to, we still have to do the number ports, but their calls are going through the new phones. So sheriff's office, the juvenile probation office. John's shop is done. The road shop I've got to do. And the community center.
The problem that planning and building was having is that been fixed? Where the, it was being disconnected when people called?
I haven't heard anything new from James. But again, it's one, it's one of those same issues where everything looks fine. So without, without more information, that I just can't troubleshoot anymore. So I've asked, I've asked when he's happy, has people who have that problem call and can't get through to let me, to, to get me their information so I can get the information.
I don't know if it's still happening, but I know the city couldn't call them on their landline.
When was that?
Yeah, James has, has said time and time again, and it seems to be that if they're calling from a landline, they they get disconnected, but if they're calling from a cell phone, they don't, or vice versa.
My I mean, my, my, my thing is it's AT&amp;T is not forwarding the calls correctly. There, it's just stopping in their system because technically the line is disconnected on, on the AT&amp;T side because they ported it to someone else. So I, I'm, I think it's some automated thing inside AT&amp;T system that's the line is disconnected and not forwarded.
So what can we do to rectify that?
There's, there's nothing really that we can do other than get the information, give it to service star. Their reporting department can go to AT&amp;T and say, hey, this is happening. Fix it. So, so I mean, I'll write that down that the city is one of them. So I can get their, their number, know that their AT&amp;T, their service is being provided by AT&amp;T. So at least that's more information than I had that I can take to service star and hopefully sort some of this stuff out.
Okay, and we'll ask James to get numbers of anybody else that might have landlines.
Yes.
That are doing that.
Numbers and who their telephone service provider.
Okay, both things.
Yes, because if, if it's not, if it's not just AT&amp;T that, that's happening with, then I need to know that too.
Okay, all right, great. Any questions of Justin before he? Nope. Okay, thank you very much. All right, is Heidi on?
Heidi is on, but she messaged me and said that she does not have a local.
Okay, all right. So she doesn't ever work. Public defender.
We have.
We have a report from him. And did you want to comment on it? Okay.
I mean, you have one of them.
Yeah, I do. Somewhere. Yeah. And we did get from this, from the State Indigent Committee, their quarterly report listing all the the counties and what's happening, which is great.
I was going to print it off, but it was like forty pages.
And I saved it. I go through more paper. So if it's okay, I would like to go to number, if it's all right with you, Sam, I'd like to go to number eight with the museum. And you said you were fine. So we have from the museum board, we have, is Jesse, are you, are you Jesse?
Yeah.
Why don't you come on up and Bonnie and Penny, you guys can come up too. We don't bite on us. Do you think come up here?
I've seen a picture of it. It looks neat.
Bonnie, grab a chair and just move it up here so you can sit down. You gentlemen can sit. So if I could get you to introduce yourselves, please, for the.
I'll introduce us. My name is John Jangila.
Oh, John.
This is Joe Finelli.
Hi, Joe.
Behind us is Jay Howie and Jordan back over there. We all represent Jesse Le Reno, fourteen twenty-two chapter.
Great. So you have a request to erect a historical monument at the Marsen House Museum. So you want to tell us about that?
I, I actually had a packet made.
Oh, great. Thank you.
You guys, you guys at the board as well. We would like to write a sort of a monument in the shape of a fatter at the Marsen House Museum. Representing the old mining town it was at the base of the seven troughs. And we were looking for people to have that erected. There would be no cost to the county or to the museum board. It would all, all the labor and materials will be supplied by us. We were just looking for approval, possibly middle of March to have this erected and have a dedication ceremony April second of this year.
April second.
So Bonnie is the chair of the museum board, and normally you would go to the museum board. Okay.
But due to the inconsistency of e-clamethitis and communication issues.
Okay, well, I appreciate that. Thank you for the attempt. It's been a crazy couple of years anyway with stuff, so.
And just to clarify, this is a, is basically a facsimile. We got one of the perpetual models.
I noticed.
Love Lock to, to allow to be photoshopped on it.
So Shayla, you can't see this, but I'm saving a copy for you. It's a picture of Commissioner Rackley in front of one of the monuments, so. So if there are no questions, I would entertain a motion.
Oh, I would, by all means, make a motion to approve the installation.
Do I have a second? Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you so much for coming out and.
What are you going to do for footing or what, what do you need there?
So for the footings, it's going to be an eighteen inch by four foot wide by two foot deep footing.
Okay.
That we will set. We will let it cure for.
So you'll come in ahead of time and get that.
Yes, we are planning on doing this March, the weekend of March eighteenth. We will bring down all our, we got all the materials, the concrete, the rebar. We'll set the footing. We will let it set up for a couple of hours and then we will stand the form, mount the plaque to the form and then seal it and then fill it full of concrete.
Cool.
So have you already selected where you're going to put this?
I did talk to Barbara last year and she said she would like it just outside the gate, the front gate.
Do you, do you need to know where exactly that's going to be or?
You guys kind of know exactly what you're doing down there. I think, I think we're okay.
Okay.
If you have a better spot, you would like it.
That sounds good.
Perfect, perfect.
They're pretty easy. Okay, great. Well, thank you, gentlemen, very much. And we appreciate all you do in the community. You're putting them all over the place. So that's great.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
We'll make sure that the press is there.
Okay, and so there's another item on the museum board. It's a request to reallocate the grant that I believe was already approved, approved to include social media avenues, but not limited to Google Ads, Facebook advertising, hiring a person to manage the social media accounts and billboard advertising. And the matching funds would be covered by volunteers and the museum budget. So that was approved by your board, I believe, to make those changes. And so it's just coming before us. So if I could entertain a motion to get that approval.
So.
I have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. The other is approval of de-concessioning, isn't it? I don't know.
Yeah.
Anyway, inventory items that are going to be auctioned out at an auction house in Reno. So could you tell us about that, please?
I brought you a copy of the, where, where the items will be taken.
Oh, you got it. Good. Thank you.
It's lightning auctions. They've agreed to take our assignment, our materials. And what they do, the big items, they'll auction separately. Probably the smaller items, they'll group together. And we, it doesn't cost anything to have your stuff sold there. The buyer pays the commission to have the auction house do that. So we would get the profits that would go into our donation gift fund. We'd like to have more money in there to start building on that nineteen thirties railroad house and start getting that fixed up. That's the reason we would like to eliminate some of the things that are overflow.
So I believe you provided a list to Karen Westner, and it was quite lengthy.
Yes. Every single little frontier button or ranch or anything, a rock had a number on it. So if we didn't want to keep it, we had to deassess it.
And the museum board approved going forward with this?
Yes.
So are there any questions or do you, Mr. DA, do you have any concerns?
No, I don't.
Okay. Shayla, do you have any questions?
No, I don't. And I'll make a motion to approve.
So I have a motion. Do I have a second? Motion and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you very much. You guys, everybody's doing a great job at the museum. Thank you. You're welcome. Sam will be after me about this, though. So I'll go to item number seven then. Sam Sanders. You're welcome to stay throughout our whole meeting, but you know. It's fun to listen to what we do. Okay, I'm sorry. If you could say it a little louder, introduce yourselves for the record.
I'm Sam Sanders from Uprised Fiber. This is Brandon Fuller, also from Uprised Fiber. So we are in the process of applying for a federal grant through the USDA reconnect program, which is a program that's designed to expand broadband access in rural and tribal communities. And we identified Love Lock as an area that can qualify for this program. So our plan right now, and we have built a design to bring high-speed fiber in that, basically from Derby Field all the way up to Wright Patch and everywhere in between. So the program requires us to bring fiber to every single building, every premise in the whole area. Even some of the farmland, farm areas, really.
Within the city or?
Every ranch, every home, every business, every building from here to the dam. Yeah, literally. So roughly almost two thousand locations. Yeah. So what would end up happening is you guys would have access to building a network that would be capable of providing ten gigabits internet to every home and business. County office, city stuff, school, hospital, really everywhere. So we have a pretty significant application process. We're well into it. It's due on February twenty-second. And we are working with the state's, the governor's office of science and technology, Department of Transportation, a lot of other entities as well. Everyone's been very supportive and helpful, which is great. And so we're here to just ask for you guys to just report a letter of support.
Is there anybody else, another company, other companies looking at doing the same thing?
Not here.
Would that say?
No, no. The application process has a scoring matrix that is weighted pretty heavily towards tribal land. And because you guys don't count a lot of it, we're not going to score as high as some other applicants will, just by definition, just because of the way of the way of land. However, because the type of, there's four different funding types for this grant program. The one hundred percent grants with no matching funds is what I believe most applicants are going to go for. And so that will.
We like the no matching.
We do, but you know, I think because of Love Lock missing a couple of the check marks on the scoring matrix, we are actually going to apply for a one hundred percent grant that requires us to put forward twenty-five percent. We are actually going to apply for a one hundred percent grant that requires us to put forward twenty-five percent matching funds. And those can come from us, they can come from other grant programs, city, state, county. Whoever, whoever wants to help us get this thing done. The amount of money that we're going to be applying for is thirty-two million dollars. Yeah, it's a big number, which is going to require us to bring about eight million dollars to the table. Our transportation has agreed to do a cost share with us for our work along Haiti. Which will help us defray some of that twenty-five percent. And we're meeting with the state governor's office on Thursday to discuss some other options. Part of our plan is to try to expand this from just simply a fiber building, internet delivery projects. But to also add in some other elements as far as education and workforce training. Potentially workforce housing as well. My partner is a developer and we're looking at the idea of we're going to have to have, you know, purchase some land here and build some facilities here. And looking at the option of trying to build some multi-family. Units as well as kind of do a mixed-use thing. We're going to be needing to hire and bring in quite, quite a lot of people to get this thing done. It's a big project. We've done this thing, we've done this type of stuff before. We're in the middle of a forty-five mile fiber build in Reno and Sparks, North Washington County. So the fiber, the build, the fiber parts, the easy part of the application is a real nightmare. We're getting through it. There's a few items that are kind of outside of our control as far as timing is concerned. We're pretty sure we can get it done. Our part will be done. We're hopeful that we can get some of the professional opinions and some of that type of stuff that we need as well. By the twenty-second of February. So they haven't given a hard date as far as when the awards will be given. We've heard July or August kind of being tossed out there. So the good news is whether or not we are awarded this round, there's a few different ways we can look forward still, which. There's another round of funding for this exact same program coming around September. And I think just the fact that we already have a fully baked design and engineered plan for this area, we're hoping that will allow us to. You know, if the USDA grant program doesn't work out, that we'll be able to look at state funds, county funds, other ways to get this thing done. It's doable. And like a lot of rural areas and smaller towns, money is the barrier, you know, and if we can get past that hurdle. Do something pretty special. So this would make, this would really give Love Lock the best term at the United States as far as speed and capabilities, which is pretty cool. And we're going to hit the industrial parks and these other areas to try to make this an economic driver for the city and county.
Yeah.
So have you worked with Heidi, our economic development?
Is Heidi on this?
I don't know.
Well, she is. Hi Heidi. Yes, Heidi's been wonderful. I met her at the conference about Pidamaka and that's kind of how we got the ball rolling for this entire thing. As well. So she's been great to work with and she's been helpful to get the information that we need as well about the premises. So yeah, a lot of, once we have that place, we do a lot of fun things. One of our plans is to put public wifi, you know, in the parks and the other places that people gather. You know, ideally, we add in some of the, you know, interesting things with workforce training, college education systems.
So do you have a sample letter or?
Yeah, we, we wrote one up. The, you know, the application doesn't give us any of those, that type of stuff. So we do, we do have like a four to you guys.
Well, we need something so that our administrative assistant can.
I'll afford you, I'll afford that ticket. Just one page. This is not required for the application, but it is helpful. We want to make sure that everybody has, I am what we're trying to do. To show, sort of, you know.
Well, I'm, we're excited that you're wanting to take on that project. Did you have a question?
Is DA looked at that?
I have not seen it, no.
Well, we'll have to do that so we could approve it pending your review of the letter?
Yeah.
Okay. So is there, Shayla, do you have any questions?
I don't. I like the idea. I also like the idea of housing coming in. So I will make the motion to approve the letter pending the DA's approval.
I can then.
So I have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen, very much. So if you could get that to Mrs. Westner, that would be awesome.
We'll keep you up to date on what we hear.
Okay, we appreciate that. Okay. So going to elected departments, Lacy Donaldson.
Last week, we printed and mailed courtesy letters to all of our Kalinka accounts or accounts that had paid, you know, odd amounts. So we've been very busy answering phones and taking feedbacks.
Good job.
Yes.
No, she appreciates that. So we have a number of tax rule corrections.
A whole bunch of them.
So were there any questions on the tax rule changes?
Now we skipped code enforcement.
Oh, sorry. Thank you. Yeah, I know, but I'll go back to it in a second. Shayla, did you have any questions on the tax rule changes?
I didn't. It was mostly mobile homes being removed. Is that correct?
If I could get a motion, please.
Oh.
Issue.
I'll make, okay, I'll make that motion to approve the tax corrections.
Thank you, Shayla.
And I'll second.
I have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. And I skipped code enforcement. I'm sorry. Is there a report?
No.
Thank you.
I would note that under code enforcement, the burned building on Upper Valley Road. What fell down completely, but they've been working on it and it has, it's a good improvement.
Thank you very much. Okay, Beach one. And Rain Childs, do you have a report?
And then I just wanted to, we set the budget workshops for the fifteenth, sixteenth and seventeenth of March. The final revenue numbers come in on Friday, March twenty-fifth. So I'm wondering if we should try to set a brief meeting that last week in March. In case we have to go over anything, which would be March twenty-eighth through the.
Are you available on the twenty?
Oh, no, I'm in, I'm in Reno that day.
How about the twenty-ninth or the?
I'm in, in Reno, twenty-eight, twenty-nine and thirty.
So the thirty-first?
How about the twenty-fifth? Is that too late?
Yeah, because I don't get them until.
It's too early.
They always, Department of Taxation sends them around after hours.
So is April first, is it April too late?
Thirty-first.
Yeah, the thirty-first is okay with you?
Yeah.
Rain, would that work?
I.
It's cutting it short for you to. Because they're due fifteen.
You know, I mean, I could probably, I could do my phone maybe one of those days, but.
Could, the twenty-eighth, could you do it early in the morning?
I don't have my schedule here with.
We can do it the thirty-first. That should be okay.
That's okay.
Make sure that I have, hopefully it's not too many problems that we have to go over on the thirty-first.
Shayla, would you be available on March thirty-first in the morning for a quick budget update and, and maybe a few corrections?
Yes, I'll just put it on my calendar now.
Okay, do you want to do it at nine o'clock, eight-thirty? What, what is everyone's pleasure?
Let's do eight-thirty.
Okay.
Eight-thirty?
Eight-thirty?
Yes.
On March thirty-first? Okay, great. Thank you very much. The assessor is Lori Assosarini on? Nope, okay. Mr. or DA Shields, do you have a report?
I've had a few of the points out for a while. To or back this week. Glad to have her back. 见过one secretary for about. Eight or ten days there.
Oh, my gosh.
Did a good job just handling all of the work that we throw on her. So. Our gratitude goes out to all the hard work. And we're glad to have almost a full complement of staff back. And I don't have much.
Okay, Judge Stevens, I don't see. Okay, finally, Chair Valen. You have a salary resolution?
That makes me move Valerie from part-time to full-time since we lost one of our dispatchers last week.
Okay. So we have a salary resolution for Valerie Phillips. I'm moving her.
And I would move to approve that resolution.
Okay.
All second.
So I have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Motion carries. Thank you. We have the, when is the Burning Man contract expire?
Next year.
Yeah.
Is it?
I have it on the agenda to talk about it next week. To talk about the festival, I guess I should put something specifically on the agenda to talk about the contract. But.
Does it expire the December thirty-first of this year?
The proper term of this contract does not expire for forty-one more years. But the first time we can take a look at it, make modifications, so my understanding is next year. So.
Okay. Because, all right. So well, thank you very much. So Derby Field Airport?
I would, under for our water line, I would report that we did get the permit through that Far West was working on. For the airport water line. That's in-depth and it's safe water drink bureau of safe water drinking. Anyway, that permit has been approved. Next, next step we will do is. I'll be working with Bryce to put the material bid. Our material item.
And then there's funding available to build hangars inside the air.
I talked to them after I was made aware of that and. It's, it's a very new program, so they don't have all the details. And they really as yet don't know how readily available anybody will be. It is, when it, when it does get up and going, it's a four-year project. And for Persian County, it's a hundred thousand dollars per year.
And then as far as, do we have, when we do the water system, we have to put in a.
Project now that we, we need to look at and not very far off, and especially with this money. Is an electric. Project to take underground electric out to where hangars.
Well, and there's the American Rescue Funds too, that we've gotten some money from, for some things.
That's for the water line.
Those funds, the additional funds that you've received for the airport.
Oh, those, yeah.
They're little amounts, yeah. But according to Kurt, there's a lot of money coming down the road, so maybe we can get all this done as long as it's on the airport itself.
And Kurt will keep me informed.
Okay. All right, great. And then the hangar agreement, are we going to have that on the agenda soon?
It's already been approved.
Did we approve it? See, I'm getting old. Okay.
So the agreement itself has been approved. And then once we give it to the lessees and they sign it. It'll come in front of the board.
Okay, okay. That's great. Thank you very much, Commissioner Rackley. I don't want to skip anything else here. Unionville Cemetery, oh, item number nine. Bryce, did you want to discuss that or do you?
Number nine?
Yeah. Or do you want me to?
Well, you've been in communication with.
Okay. I was contacted by the Bureau of Land Management and. Concerning the Unionville Cemetery and our request to make it an unrestricted deed. And it was felt that if we indicated that the right-of-way that actually goes through that property on just a corner of it. Was perpetual, that the state would be able to approve that. And I didn't see any problems, but I didn't know if Bryce did. And I don't ever see the land actually being changed enough that we would need to change that right away. I believe that goes to the transfer site now anyway. And, but there is an appeal to it, let's say a hundred years down the road, the county wanted to make a change. They could appeal to BLM for that change. And, but if this will get this finally in the county's hands in an unrestricted use. That would be, I think, a great move. So I would entertain a motion to approve that.
I would make that motion to approve.
All second.
I have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you very much. Board appointments. What do we have? We have Dale Talcott for the cemetery. I thought we approved him already, but just in case we didn't, we have that. And then what else do we have? We have a reappointment for Ted Bendur to the Economic Development, Pecita Board. And that's all I should. And a resignation from Barbara Rackley from the museum board. So I would entertain a motion to approve all three of those.
I would make that motion. Well, maybe I better.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
So I have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you very much. We have a ten o'clock and we have Public Defender here, if you'd like to come up. We have your report, so thank you. And then I noted that we received the quarterly report from the state for all the counties.
Yeah, it had a despairing amount of operation. I saw Churchill County that supplied two hours of data. But I think as I emailed with Mr. Shields yesterday. I'm complying with that, but it's not part of the settlement. We weren't, we weren't party to it. We weren't defined as rural county, but. Something along the lines of expressions of that part of power in that regard. And it's just, you know, I guess it's still the line where I still see. Do you keep track of that as if we're building by the practice where. The divide comes between the administrative and the pure legal work. And it looks to be like. Eighty percent. Of that twenty percent, a lot of us deal with.
How's everything else going in your department?
Good. I think, you know, I think a lot of courthouse is kind of getting a common cold and that's going around. I'm not sure if that's hitting our office, but I think either one of us felt the greatest this morning and so, oh, no. But otherwise, I mean, things are good. I'll be. I think there was just the judicial conference down in Vegas last week. I'm interested to kind of start to hear rumbles about what other counties are doing in terms of forty-eight hour. Initial appearance requirement, whether that's, I mean, I expect it to probably be a mix of contracting it out to other people. Or something with the existence of a defender. Structure, so. But yeah, I haven't heard too much. Entered an agreement with Kyle Swanson already for the weekend, but outside of that, two specifics. But yeah, other than that, relatively well.
Okay, great. Are there any questions? Shayla, do you have any questions?
No, I don't have any questions.
Commissioner Rackley, no? Okay. Thank you very much. Okey-dokey. Sean Burke, is he, he's still not on? Okay. Number twelve is an update on emergency management and the COVID. Is Commissioner Rackley, do you have any update or anything?
I did update the spreadsheet, which shows that Rain has this. I did update the spreadsheet, which shows that Rain has this.
Do you have another copy?
It reflects.
I'm making a stack here.
This, all that, it just reflects the change, we added the Emily Water Design in there. There's still a negative balance when you add that in there. The Wright Patch Firehouse, of course, the numbers were reworked to show how much money comes out of both accounts. We have a chief's meeting in a couple of weeks, anyway, and we'll discuss that.
Okay, thank you very much. Do you want to go to a litigation meeting?
Yeah.
Okay. Shayla, we're gonna go to a litigation meeting. But I'm sorry. Is this still on? Shayla, we're coming back into session. And Bryce said he would update you individually. Number fourteen is execution of, is that the right one? Yeah, execution of subdivision settlement participation forms and releases pursuant to the One Nevada Agreement on allocation of opioid recoveries previously agreed upon for participation in settlements with, one, the State of Nevada and opioids distributor defenders, Amerisource, Bergen Drug Corporation, Cardinal Health and Mackenzie, as listed in Exhibit C to the One Nevada Agreement, and two, the State of Nevada opioid manufacturer defendant Jansen and Johnson and Johnson, as listed in Exhibit C to the One Nevada Agreement, this is a tongue twister.
Yeah, it is.
And B, execution of an amendment, number one, to the One Nevada Agreement on allocation of opioid recoveries regarding a reduction in attorney's fees to the One Nevada Agreement for purposes of these two settlements only. So, Mr. DA, do you have any comments?
My recommendation to the board would be to sign those documents so that we can, the state of Nevada and the participating litigants can continue to negotiate in a broader scope with the most culpable parties of opioid epidemic, while at the same time reach a settlement with other perpetrators, so that the county can avail itself of whatever funds are available for treaty opioid epidemic of Persian County.
So thank you, I would entertain a motion.
Someone.
I'll make a motion to approve the settlement, signing the settlement form.
I have a motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries, thank you. Report from legal counsel.
I really don't have.
Report from Administrative Assistant HR rep. Okay, thank you. Thank you, I'm sure you are. Items for future agendas, Shayla, do you have anything for a future agenda?
Aye. Not right now.
Okay, Commissioner Rackley?
I don't.
Okay. I've been in touch with Cheryl with W N D D, and she's going to do a proposal on facilitating our planning workshops. And she's suggesting that we look at three different meetings. And she's wondering if we would be available on February, besides the eighteenth of February, February twenty-fifth and March the fourth. And I know the twenty-fifth, we have Board of Equalization, I believe, in the morning, so it would need to be in the afternoon. And then on the fourth would be in the morning. Shayla, would you be available those days and times?
Are these Friday, in February?
One is February twenty-fifth, it's a Friday, it would be the afternoon, maybe one o'clock. The other is March fourth, which is the morning, like maybe nine o'clock again. We are already scheduled for February eighteenth, but this would be two additional meetings. I'm just, I'm putting that out there, it'll be on our next, her proposal.
Okay.
But I'm.
I will try and schedule around these, Fridays are bad for me, but I'll, I'll try and get them booked out, so I'll try and make it work.
All right, thank you very much.
So what time are we thinking, one o'clock?
I'm thinking one o'clock on the twenty-fifth. Because there's a morning Board of Equalization meeting, otherwise we could do it in the morning. And then nine o'clock on.
And then we're calling this what?
These are the planning.
Yeah. In fact, that's, I have planning on my, on the eighteenth, yesterday I was looking at it and said, planning?
Yeah, that's, that's the first workshop. Let's see, correspondence, is there any correspondence? There's none. And we have a few minutes, Board Member Reports. Shayla, do you have any reports?
No, I don't have anything right now.
Okay, Commissioner Rackley?
No.
I attended the, the Rural Health District Initiation, Initial Meeting that was held in Churchill. And we're gonna be having a meeting with the state health people in a few weeks regarding that. But they would be able to help us, and we're looking at the possibility of forming a health district. Of course, all this would come to the board, and I'm just attending the meetings for information and input at this point in time. Our health nurse is retiring April the first, and she's taking the month of March off, so technically the end of February, we will not have a, a nurse any longer for the community health. And I think that's about all I have. We still have a couple of minutes.
What time did we plan the one, the planning meeting for the?
For the fourth?
Yeah.
One, nine o'clock. Okay, so we've got a couple of minutes till ten, am I missing anything on the agenda? So we'll kind of take a short recess here for five minutes.
Carol, I'm gonna go back to my conference, okay?
Okay, thank you Shayla very much for participating.
Thank you.
Okay, have a great conference.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Back into session. It's 10 o'clock. We have a 10 o'clock with planning and building. And James, what you got?
In a month.
Okay.
Good. I always like to see who's building.
There's a lot we're busy on there. I don't have much significant work. We did get Cynthia's contract signed and she is. She is on board, so we'll be starting that process again. Meeting with her. Show conference pretty soon.
What did, my nurse took that mobile out of there. And I think I saw it on Airport Room.
I think, yeah. The mobile.
Yeah. 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 So now they're gonna put something in you.
In the. Visors?
Yeah.
Yeah, he's putting in a new.
Triple.
A new house and.
Yeah.
What the old one was.
Yeah, I think it is a triple way. It's gonna be a nice one.
You have been busy. It's nice to see all this activity.
It is.
Do you have any other update or?
I don't really, unless you guys have, have something.
And Emily, water and?
That, yesterday I just took a sample, water sample in, we read meters, but. Corbin is, he's getting his team together to come out and start to get the pre-engineering stuff going. Get some testing done.
All right, great.
So, yeah.
Okay.
But other than that, I mean, it's not gone. Everything has been going pretty good.
Are there any questions, Commissioner?
No, I'm still looking over.
You talked to Far West lately about the water study?
Yes, he's. Well, like I said the last time, he was supposed to be getting the draft to us within a day or two. I haven't heard anything from him this week, but I'll, I'll. And see if he's gotten me.
All right, I guess that's it.